Good afternoon, everyone. Let the Capitol Planning Commission order. Would you please call Rose?
Mayor Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Schumers. Chairman Gardner.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ken Daniel. Fire Marshal Craig.
Here.
Ms. Paula?
Here.
Seth Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Muggs.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let it be known that we do have a quorum. The minutes of January 16th, 2025, if ever other member, the commission have chance to review those. Any questions?
I'm over to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Minute passed. We don't have a committed report. And the next, we got old business, it's a preliminary plat. Jamie Morris, plat one. Location is 279 Gardner's Road, only is okay, a bonnet. Now, I see on that public hearing that there is a postponement. Can you verify what that means?
Yes, there's a postponement from January 16th of the Jamie Morris plat, and it was postponed to today.
So it is valid for today?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. All right, to the public, I'm letting you know that this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing, and you could come up and speak from three to five minutes on a public hearing. And pardon?
I would like to state also that the Kingston Heights plat will not be on today's agenda. That was previous month's agenda. Some letters were accidentally sent out. Just want everyone to know that if you're here for the Kingston Heights, that is not on today's agenda.
Okay. Now, is there anyone like to come up and speak? Is there anyone like to come up and speak on the public hearing on Gardner Road? Hear none, I close the public hearing. Ms., let's go to the minutes. Ms. Paula, if you will, would you read in? Let me see.
Sure.
Yeah.
Preliminary.
Preliminary.
Preliminary plat, Jamie Morris plat one, January sixth, February 20th, 2025. Whereas Jamie Morris has presented a preliminary plat of Jamie Morris plat one for consideration by the Planning Commission. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits at 279 Gardner Road. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed preliminary plat was heard on February 20th, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby approves the preliminary plat of Jamie Morris plat one with the following waivers. Subdivision reg 4.3, additional infrastructure improvements, including sidewalks, curb, and gutter.
All right.
That is the waiver. So those would not be required.
Right.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. We open for discussion. Do we have any discussion at this moment?
Yes, sir, I do. I guess first is a question about the waiver. Does this waiver go along with what is pictured? Can we pull a picture of exactly the property we're talking about? It's what's the property of the, it's outlined in blue? Okay. The property that's outlined in blue. So if he comes back to build additional houses in there, and I believe, is there additional information coming about this property that's in question now? Whether potentially going to be building additional lots, houses in there?
Planning, we didn't have any additional concerns. I believe engineering and fire had concerns about a fire apparatus access. And then also just the engineering was suggesting a site distance study be done.
The challenges that I see, not on Gardner Road, but further into the property, could potentially be controlling of the storm waters. And curb and gutter is usually a general way to help alleviate or control some of that. The sidewalks in this area, I have no issue with having a waiver on those. But I have a lot of concerns about, about the curb and gutter portion of it. Now, also, I have issues with it being zone R4 at this point in time. And the third issue, as I have said up here before, I am not a fan of flag lots, especially when they're set up like this one. And I have been on site, have walked through the house that you're working on now, Mr. Morris. And I think looks like it's going to be a good product. But walking on the property and the elevation changes, I have so many concerns about additional houses being built on this piece of property. But I thought I saw one drawing that actually had another five or six lots, potentially behind the house that's in construction now.
Yeah, that's correct. There's additional, yes, seven additional lots that he would like to. He's already, there is already a house being built on the, on the first lot. But yes, sir, there's, I guess I'd make it, yes, six additional lots.
Well, again, I'd like to get some input from, from the commission up here about the curb and gutter being R4, and the terrain that they're basically trying to, to build on. Because as, right now, I'm, I just, I don't see how I can support this project.
Is there a representative here for this particular project?
Yeah, I mean, me and my engineer here.
All right. Would you please introduce yourself and tell us basically about the design for this particular project?
I'm Jamie Morris. I'm over the entire project, and this is my engineer.
Taylor Watson with PEC, out of Montgomery.
All right. Mr. Mayor, he has a couple of questions. Do y'all have answers for that?
Most of the questions that were, Mr. Mayor, spoke on, we had met with everybody with the city in terms of the engineering department, the fire department. We had got everything cleared away. With that design, it reflects everything that's needed and the regulations that are required to build on that lot. So I'm not necessarily too for sure of the concerns that's been presented. Because we had already spoke with the city before we, you know, took on this idea. And we had been dealing with Scott since about August of last year to get everything cleared up. But Taylor can speak more on the technicalities of their situation than me.
I know as far as engineer goes, stormwater is not required for this site. If we don't have curb and gutter, it'll work down the street. You know, just swell down the street, culvert under the driveways. It's not, I mean, it's only four acres. You're talking about houses, so it's not a lot of impervious area. It would flow, we would put a culvert under the roadway kind of in the low spot to allow that water that's coming on site to drain, how it's draining now. So I don't have any concerns with that, on my end at least, as the engineer.
And, and I appreciate that, but.
Yes, sir.
Wearing, wearing my mayor's hat, I've had, I've seen multiple times where the city has had to, to buy a house out and have it demolished because of flooding. And so that's one reason why I'm so, so careful in looking at various stormwater areas. And the terrain that is here, it is, it's quite, quite a bit. What's the elevation change? Do you know right off the head, top of your head?
I want to say it's 30-ish feet. But, um, you know, it's along the whole property. The grade on the road, I've profiled it out. I think we can get 10%. So not too steep, and it would meet fire, fire access. So on that road, it would come down to that low point at 10% and then come back up at 10% on the other side.
And you're not asking the city to take over maintenance of this road, this drive, are you?
When you speak of maintenance, what are you?
You're trying to turn this street over to the city as a public right-of-way?
Yes.
Mayor, if you don't mind.
Would you please come up?
One thing I did ask about, maybe y'all can clarify, is just a site distance study along Gardner Road. I do have some concerns just with this, where the road would come out and tie in the Gardner Road, just with site distance there. I don't know if y'all looked into that or got anything on that. But my recommendation is that if this is approved, that there's a condition put on it, that that site distance must be met. Because I do have some concerns there with just meeting that site distance and that being a safe intersection. So I don't know if you have anything on that.
If it was required.
Please speak into the mic, so.
If it's required, we would do it. Okay.
I would recommend that, you know, a condition do be put on the approval of this, that that study be required for review prior to proceeding with anything on the development.
All right. Do we have any more questions for that surveyor, Ms. Morris?
Can, can a fire truck turn around?
They do meet the requirements of the city for that and the grade if they can get it to 10% or below.
So they meet the requirement?
That's what the plans are stating, that it'll be 10% or less.
Okay.
Which is what's required by the code, 10%. No more than 10%.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. Is there any more question for anyone else? Any commissions have any, any further comments?
If not, I'd like to make a motion to amend. And let me get my sheet out here. Line 21, subdivision regulations, additional infrastructure improvements, including sidewalks and curb and gutter. That is the waiver. I would like to have, including sidewalks left, but, and curb and gutter removed.
A second.
There's a motion.
You made that an emotion?
Yes, sir.
We had a second. We open for discussion? Any further discussion? All right. I call for the question. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carry.
Well, that was the, that was the amendment.
That was for the amendment.
Right, right.
Can I offer another amendment so that it meets as the, the traffic study or site distance study be done and approved, subject to approval by the planning department and the city engineer? I'd like to make that a motion.
Okay.
And I second.
Any further discussion? Hear none, I call for the question. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. All right. Motion carry. It's 42. All right.
Do you have, yeah, so now would be probably before us, but a point of privilege, for this to pass, how many will it take? Is it?
Six votes.
Simple majority?
No.
It's going to take?
For the preliminary?
It takes six affirmative votes.
It takes six for the preliminary.
That's what I wanted to verify.
But it's more than just take six for, for the preliminary. Since the preliminary is at, at bay, at now, if you don't have a legitimate reason not to pass it, then you must, we may go before the State of Alabama board. Everything been passed accordingly, so, but if they don't follow the orders accordingly to the plans and the specs, then things can be denied. But as of now, we must pass the preliminary. It's just a word of order. And if you don't pass the preliminary as of right now, then we are at fault. The voters are at fault. But preliminary, it takes six votes, and we only have six present. Irregardless, we must pass the preliminary because we done made it up to this far. Just making sure that everyone know. We must have six positive votes.
You may speak.
You are correct. We do have to have six affirmative votes for this to pass. But I will respectfully disagree with you on whether we have to vote yes or no on this one. Because if it was, as you stated, there would be no reason for this body to be listening to this. So with that in mind, and I know we have some rules in place, too. If it's voted down, it's going to have to sit out a year unless there's significant changes. And I'm sorry that we do not have a full body up here, but I've always mentioned for everybody to vote their conscience, and I will be voting mine, which will not be in approval of this.
From the planning department, can y'all verify what we are saying about the preliminary being passed by six vote? Unless and there is a legitimate reason and changes that don't concur with the agreement that was accepted for the first vote from the plat?
Okay, so you need six affirmative votes.
That's correct.
If, if, if it doesn't pass, you do need, whoever voted against needs to give a reason why they decided to vote no.
And that reason must concur. And as of right now, everything that they are presenting is in order based on what we have here. And that's how it made it to the preliminary. And now if they were to make changes, that's not in order. But everything that is in order up to now, Mr. Engineer, do you have anything different to say to prove that it's not in order? Please come up to the mic.
I don't know that I, I don't know that I have anything different to say, other than if a commission member decides to vote no. Like Josh said, they just have to state their reasoning why. The commission can vote how the commission wants to vote. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I would also like to add, if the, if a member does vote no, it, their reason has to align with zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. And they will have to give their reason of no within their 30 days. If it pass within their 30 days, then the plat gets approved.
So in other words, you're saying if, if a member votes no, and they don't give a legitimate reason within that 30 days, it automatically pass? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So they just have to go on record of the reasoning why that they want to vote no.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all very much.
So if we're meeting, if we're meeting zoning and subdivision regs, is there a legitimate reason that it would not pass?
There shouldn't be, based on what I know about the planning commission.
Right.
As a whole.
Because I mean, we're meeting, we're meeting those regulations. I mean, that's what we want to do.
Well, one suggestion I might have is y'all hold it until the next planning commission meeting, and hopefully we'll have a full array of commissioners.
Well, we don't, we don't want to hold it to the next meeting. We want a vote done today. Because there got to be a legitimate reason to vote no if we mean all the regulations. If there's not a legitimate reason to vote no, why is, why are you voting no? Is the better question. But we wanted to vote today.
Okay. Any further discussion from the planning commissioners? Hear none, I call for the question. All in favor of the, of the, the 279 Gardner's Road preliminary plat? Let it be known by raising your hand, your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Okay. And the vote is?
Five to one.
Five to one. Okay.
Did not pass.
Did not pass accordingly. All right.
So we get that reason within 30 days?
Yes.
I go.
Yes. Yeah, you get that within 30 days, and it'll come from the planning department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item of business is new business, it's preliminary plat. Freefield Estate, plat one. Location is, is a Bridge Creek Road, Goodwin Building Company Incorporated. This is a public hearing. Larry Speaks and Associates. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to come up and speak? This is a public hearing.
Yes, I'm Greg Gillen with Larry Speaks and Associates, and speaking on behalf of the developer.
Hold on one minute. What you saying now?
I go first. My apologies, Greg.
That won't be in the minutes. You go, go ahead.
So here we have the Briarfield plat. So here we have just an overall view of that surrounding community. And here is a, here's a closer look of that property. So this property is currently zone R3 with those adjacent properties within the county. So the future land use for the property is low density residential. So here we have that proposed plat for the property that's over 40 acres with 23 residential lots. 22 of those lot sizes are under acre, with the exception of lot one that's right, by the right of way, being over one acre. With the easement lots over five acres. So here we have just a closer look of those residential lots, which is 23 lots with that lot one with the access point just coming into it. And then we have, you can go back. And then we have two common areas, areas. I can't talk today. Okay. You can go to the next slide. And so here we have those five easement lots as well, which is labeled A through E. They are requesting waivers for street frontage along lots B and E and sidewalks and curb and gutter for lot one. Please note that the waiver request for the sidewalks and curb and gutter was later requested when the revisions of that proposed plat was submitted to the planning department, and is reflected in the staff report and application. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Not at this moment.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Gillen?
Yes, thank you. Greg Gillen with Larry Speaks and Associates, speaking on behalf of the developer, Goodwin Building Company. And we're seeking to build a normal subdivision with the 23 lots. The one lot is out here on Bridge Creek Road, and this is where we're asking a waiver from the curb and gutter and the sidewalks. We are asking, I mean, your regulations sort of stop us at 1,000 feet without the interconnectivity, and that's why we're asking to be able to develop the back into five acre parcels with a private access drive. And I'm here to answer any particular questions you may have.
Does any of the commission have any question, Mr. Gillen, at this time?
Help me out on this one. I believe there is a sewer lift station at the furthest end of the property that was constructed decades ago.
There's a concrete structure sitting there, and there, so we have no intentions of using it. We're going septic type.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any question for Mr. Gillen at this time? Thank you very much, Mr. Gillen. This is a public hearing, it's open to the public. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak at this time? If you will, state your name and address, please.
Reginald Autry. We have, we own the property that's next to it. Just want to make sure that the drainage and, you know, the, so we don't have erosion because we own 40 acres next to it. And it looks like the, in fact, our property would be joining the back, looks like five, five lots back there. We're just concerned about the erosion control on that area, because we have cattle on that area. And that's the other thing, is to make sure. Right now, I know it's not in the city limits, and is that, is it going to wind up being in the city limits? I'm sure it will eventually. Is there going to be a problem with our cattle? Or would it be considered at this time? I know it's not in the city limits. I don't know what the regulations are with cattle and donkeys and so forth.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, can, can we verify? I was thinking this is inside corporate limits. That's one of the reasons why we've had to go through so many reviews, because our fire department friends. But, but again, you can have horses, cattle inside the corporate limits.
Okay.
But I don't think anybody that probably be buying these lots probably will. I don't think they're going to be in competition with you. But.
Okay. Well, I was just going by the dotted line that it looks like on the back of the map. You know, I'm, maybe my map don't, doesn't cover it just correctly, I don't know.
Well, we'll, we'll verify all of that, but I'm 99% certain it is inside the corporate limits.
And when, and when do they propose starting?
That, uh.
I know it's going to depend on the, on the panel, I'm assuming.
We, we can't really speak on that. It's, there's been a lot of times these projects like this come before us, and they come back later on again and again. But wish I had a date for you.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak at this time?
I would make note that the proposed property is in the city limits, and those adjacent properties are in the county. If that answer your question.
I guess I'm dumbfounded. How can, how?
You need to speak in the mic, sir.
So is the dotted line the city limits? Is that what you're saying?
So the dotted line is the county. So if it's not colored in, it's not within the city limits. However, the zoning that we're seeing now, the current planning department did not implement these zoning. So. did not implement these zoning. So this has been the zoning for decades. So we're not sure why it's in the county, within the city, within the county. And sometimes people do come to the planning commission to propose rezoning. So this is just over a span of years of the zoning being implemented.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. It's still a public hearing. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak? Here none, I close the public hearing. Mr. Allen, would you please read in the resolution?
Resolution, preliminary plat, Briarfield Estates, plat one, February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Larry E. Speaks and Associates Incorporated has presented a preliminary plat of Briarfield Estates, plat one, for consideration by the planning commission. And whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits off Bridge Creek Road, west of Bridge Creek Reserve. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed preliminary plat was heard on February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, now therefore let it be resolved that the City of Prival Planning Commission hereby approves preliminary plat of Briarfield Estates, plat one. I so move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, we open for discussion at this moment. Is any of the members of the planning commission like to speak?
Yeah. That was, in our printout, it doesn't show the exemption for the sidewalks, but this one does, right?
Um, yes. So in my presentation, the waivers for lot one was requested after revision and the packets were submitted to the commission. But it would reflect in the resolution in next meeting when the chairman has to sign it.
Okay.
Alright. Is there anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
Mayor?
I see all your recommendations is to disapprove. Can you follow up on that?
So that was just based on the easement lots. So that was reviewed with the original submitted plat. So it wasn't sure of why the lot sizes was, was over five acres for easements. But that's just a recommendation. But according to the zoning ordinance, everything is aligned and the, the changes were made, the revisions was made. But the lot sizes still remain the same.
Let's see. I'd, I'd like to have some discussion about the exemptions on the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. How does the commission feel on that?
They would still have sidewalks and curb and gutter on the, everything but lot one. Is that correct? Is that how it's presented?
Correct. If you, you wanna go back to, let's see. If you look at lot one, you see, we had questions about the access points to lot one. However, the applicant explained that they would access it through the public right of way. And that's why they requested a waiver for sidewalks and curb and gutter for lot one.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Okay. I, I guess I'm not quite following how they're gonna have that set up. I know they got it split off over here. But now the sidewalks, I don't have a problem on the exemption. But I still, I believe that the curb and gutter needs to be in place. So with that...
We get our city engineer to come and speak?
Greg, if you don't mind, can you help shed some light to me as well as far as where exactly you're asking for that waiver?
I'll show up here at the top. We're asking for the waiver on the curb and gutter sidewalk at the very top directly in front of lot one. And we were gonna do the highway improvements according to the county engineer standards or whatever he's asking.
Speak into your mic, Greg, so everyone can hear.
We're gonna do the highway improvements on Bridge Creek according to the county engineer standards.
Bridge Creek in this section is actually maintained by the county, not the city. So you're saying along lots two through twenty-three, that roadway will still have curb and gutter closed drainage system?
No, I didn't plan on putting curb and gutter there.
Not along the main road?
I didn't request it, I guess. Maybe I should have. You looking for curb and gutter everywhere?
My, my recommendation would be that curb and gutter is installed along the new roadway. I would be comfortable with waiving along Bridge Creek Road.
Okay. I guess we need some clarity about the, the curb and gutter then. How is it? It could sound like you're thinking one thing and staff and...
I'm accustomed to never asking for a waiver on an existing county road for curb and gutter for forty years until the last two or three. So this, she called and we discussed it and I asked, yes, we didn't want a waiver on Bridge Creek. But we, when we wrote it down, we just referred to lot one and I did not refer to the rest of the road. My error.
So you do want a waiver for the whole?
Yes. But again, the county engineer may come back and decide that he's gonna require it too. So he, he would have to say so.
Just on lot one, not along the, the new roadway. We, as a city, would have control over the new roadway.
That's correct. The new road definitely has curb and gutter.
So if you would refer to the email waiver request, that's when he submitted the request for lot one. But the whole frontage for the, along Bridge Creek was not submitted once we're close to.
So I think maybe to, to help clarify, lots one, two, and twenty-three along Bridge Creek Road is where the waiver would be for the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. Lots two through twenty-three along the new roadway would require curb and gutter and sidewalk.
Do we have a name for this new roadway?
We didn't put one in, but I imagine if we are calling it Barwood and we don't, Briarfield, we would probably stick with Briarfield. But that would be up to the developer to make sure. Briarfield, we're good with it.
Can we just call it the unnamed street for super clarity?
Right.
We're not boxed in?
That's what I would say is that the developed unnamed street and then a waiver along Bridge Creek Road.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
How is lot one gonna be accessed? Where, where's the access point?
We will coordinate that with the county engineer. He has his access management plan and he'll probably want a certain amount of distance from the existing entrance that we're gonna build, probably about three hundred feet. But we'll have to coordinate that with him. I would imagine it's gonna be on the far north end of the lot.
So in essence, you're gonna get information for us, for the planning department, once you coordinate with the county engineer?
Yes, he has a copy of this and when we put formal construction plans together, they'll go back through the engineer and county engineer. And we're assuming that it's gonna be on the north line. But if he'll let us move it back and put it more in the center, we prefer to do that.
Okay. Any more questions come in from the commission? Alright. Here none, I call for the question?
Any question about the five acre lots?
Any, any question about the five acre lots?
I do, actually. So that, all the five acre lots are to be built on also?
I don't know if our builder will build on that. He would have to answer that. But he may build on it, but I think those are more likely for him to sell. He usually works with smaller lots and those could easily be sold to individuals that would individually do it.
It seems like water would be a challenge out there, the distance to a hydrant, which is about...
When I submit the construction plans, I'm gonna probably send you everything.
Please speak into your mic.
When I submit the construction plans, I will submit everything on the front half of it for sure.
Right.
And we'll have to make a decision as to, you're gonna ask for an all-weather access drive to be able to get to a home.
We, that's what we need is, that's what's required. But also water, you're gonna need fire protection.
Well, we talked about a fire hydrant at one time. I mean, excuse me, a well at one time. But we'd come back to you on that subject. If we couldn't meet that requirement, you know, he may just sell it all as one piece.
Sure.
Please, Ms. Mayor?
Should we go ahead and request that all-weather surface now on the easement lots?
Okay.
I mean, see, I don't, because it's not a residential subdivision, I don't think I'm gonna see any of this again, most likely. I think it's gonna go to the building department.
We would have to come back for final plating. And at that point, you, well, it doesn't come back in front of this group again. That's true?
No. Not if you plated the way this preliminary plat states. Now, if you come back and want to plot, plot A through E as one lot, you would have to replat it at that point.
Mm-hmm.
So my recommendation as a city engineer would be to put that condition on it that if lots A, B, C, D, and E are going to be developed, then there needs to be that condition of the all-weather access road. Unfortunately for us and the commission right now, there's no way of knowing whether you want to develop those or not. So I would go ahead and put that condition on there. That if those lots are developed, that all-weather access road has to be built.
Anything you want to add?
That's fine.
Would, I know we're gonna need a turnaround at the very end of this. Is that something we need to specify in this amendment as well or this?
It probably would be covered in the all-weather access road, but it may not hurt just so you have something in there, all-weather access road with a proper, how would you wanna word that, with a, a proper sized turnaround at the end in accordance with city regulations.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Alright.
Very recent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to make an amendment?
Yes, if you...
I'd like to move that lots A three have all-weather access road with proper turnaround in accordance with all the city regulations.
Alright. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do you also want to add in just the curb and gutter waiver along one, two, and twenty-three, I believe? Would that be a part of this as well?
Yes.
Well, based on what I thought I heard is that it's gonna go before the county commissioner to determine their, in their plans and they're gonna get back with Greg to determine.
Yes, it'll go in front of the county engineer and he, he will approve any improvements on Bridge Creek for the road access out to, anything on his county right of way.
How about this? What if I make a motion that we have a curb and gutter release on everything that's not on the unnamed street?
I think that would make sense. Because currently the way it reads, if I understand correctly, it really just speaks to lot one, which rules out lots two and twenty-three. So I think that anything along Bridge Creek, how you worded that just then would be acceptable.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we have a waiver for curb and gutter on any properties of this subdivision that are not on the unnamed street.
Alright, do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, open for discussion?
We're gonna vote for both of them.
Without?
We already voted on the second. It's been voted on it. So we just have another amendment. So we have, we have one still sitting. First amendment still sitting without being voted.
Oh, that's okay.
I would note that if lots A through E does get resold and they want to replat the land, it still has to come in front of the planning commission to be voted on and reviewed by the city departments as well.
I still want to keep the amendment because I think it protects that development.
Alright, but the first thing we do, we need to vote on?
We vote on the first amendment.
The first amendment. Would you read it out, the first amendment? Ms. Crawford, read your first amendment again.
Amendments that lots A through E have all-weather access roads with proper turnaround in accordance with the city regulations.
Alright, that's the first?
Second.
Is that the first amendment?
That is.
Alright. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Now, on the second amendment that was just read in.
I make, my motion was to have a waiver for curb and gutter for any lots in this subdivision that are not on the unnamed street.
Alright. Now, do I have a second? Alright, any further discussion? Here none, I call for the question. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carry.
Now, we gotta vote on the motion with the amendments.
Right. Mm-hmm. What we read?
The main, the main resolution.
Right. You read it in?
I did.
Right, it's been read in. Right. Now, what we gonna do now is vote on the main motion. Oh, here it is. The preliminary plat, Freefield Estate, plat one. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carry. Thank you. Now, we're on another public hearing, item three. Preliminary plat, Magnolia Ridge, phase two, Old Willough Drive, Rocky Mountain Road East, and Magnolia Ridge one. This is a public hearing. Jen Matthews?
So here we have the Magnolia Ridge, phase two, preliminary plat. Here's just an aerial view of it. You see to the west is Magnolia Ridge, just of Old Farm Lane. And the proposed development is off of Rocky Mountain Road. City council did just vote to rezone portions of this lot. The northern portion is zone B two, while the southern portion is R three, which is just an extension of Magnolia Ridge. There's gonna be a total of thirty-eight residential lots. There is no waivers being requested for this plat. Any questions?
Do we have any question?
I do. Has there been any discussion about how long and straight this street is coming in to the subdivision?
There was some discussion when the master plan came through. I believe engineering did have some concerns about it, but they reap, they configured the, the, the road so that it, it wouldn't be so much of a, a sharp turn, I guess.
Thank you.
Alright. This is a public hearing. Is it anyone else like to come up and speak?
Yes, I'm Greg Gillen, again with Larry Speaks and Associates and just here to answer any particular questions that you may have.
Does any of the commission have any question at this time? Mayor?
What additional, additional traffic calming can we add to our straightaway there? Because I do have some concerns about how long and straight that's gonna be.
If that's what we need, we can work it out with Mr. Paxton. We put some in Dawson's Mill and probably something summer to that makes sense. You remember what we put in Dawson's Mill? The shelf round?
Yeah, there was a, what we call a speed table placed in Dawson's Mills. So I, I would recommend they look at putting something there on that long straightaway as well.
How long is that straightaway?
You got your glasses on today?
Thank you.
Seven eight hundred feet.
Seven hundred feet.
Somewhere in that range.
Okay.
I didn't bring my scale with me today.
I had to wear some the other day. I got some.
Yeah, seven, nine hundred, somewhere in there, give or take.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be glad to work that out with the engineer.
That's not anything we need to have a motion on, is it, I think? Or is that something we need to have included?
I don't think so. If he tells me, I've gotta do it.
Okay, that's what I was.
Typically, that's something we would handle during the construction plan review process.
Well, if you'll take care of that for me, please, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, is it anyone else like to come up and speak? This is a public hearing. Hear none, I close the public hearing. Mr. Mullen, if you will, read in the resolution?
Yes, sir. Resolution, preliminary plat, Magnolia Ridge, Phase Two, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas Larry E. Speaks and Associates Incorporated has presented a preliminary plat of Magnolia Ridge, Phase Two, for consideration by the Planning Commission, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits at Rocky Mountain Road, east of Magnolia Ridge One, and whereas a sketch plan for the proposed development was approved on November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed preliminary plat was heard on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby approves the preliminary plat of Magnolia Ridge, Phase Two. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we open for discussion with the commission? Do I have any questions? Any concerns? Hear none, I call for the question. All in favor of the Magnolia Ridge, Phase Two, let it be known by raising your right hand? All opposed, lack sign? Motion carry. Thank you. Now, item number four, I see they have a time extension. What does that mean?
Hello, so, a time extension is being requested for Highland Farms, Phase One and Phase Two. Both flats were originally approved in March twenty-twenty-three and received a thirty-day time extension at the July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, and a one-hundred-and-eighty-day time extension on August fifteenth meeting. So, the one-hundred-and-eighty-day time extension is on the twenty-eighth of this month. Please note that both phases are under construction. The applicant can go more in detail regarding the reason why for another time extension on these phases. Please note that the preliminary plat is effective with a timeline of eighteen months from the day it was approved by the Planning Commission, and at the end of that eighteen-month timeline, a final plat must be submitted and approved. If not, the applicant must request a time extension, no more than one-hundred-and-eighty days. So, if the time extension was approved, so here's just like a timeline of what that would look like. So, it will begin on March, what, thirty days would be, March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and then that deadline or extension went in August twenty-twenty-seven of twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
Are there any questions for me?
Any question?
Thank you.
All right. Sir?
Hey, good evening. I appreciate the, uh...
Miss your name and address, please?
Sorry, sorry, I'm Kenneth White with Flyers of White Engineering, I'm the engineer of record on the property. Yeah, for Phase One, we're really close to being completed, probably, you know, probably get it recorded probably next week, but the time, that's why we asked for extension. For Phase Two, we've installed the sewer and all the grade work, so we would request, obviously, a six-month extension on that, so I can entertain questions. Some of the power took a little longer to install, it took about five and a half months for installation of underground power, so, but, yeah, I think the site looks really good, it's grassed, it's, it's pretty much complete, but we request that extension, so.
All right. Well, is it anything else to be discussed? Mr. Mayor?
I do have one question. I've ridden up through there, actually, last time was up through, I came up through the Dodge dealership area.
Yes, sir.
And I hate to say, I've been on Old Farm Lane, but I haven't noticed, but the turning lane that y'all put in?
Yes, sir.
It's basically you're traveling north on. Did y'all ever finish all that up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, I knew I hadn't noticed the cone, so.
Yes, sir, I believe it's, it's complete, the whole site, yes.
I appreciate y'all doing that, and everything in there looks, looks good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do have maybe a few concerns of some of those little islands you have, but hopefully y'all get those worked out through the driveways and everything.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, does anybody have any more question from the commission? All right, thank you very much. For the time extension, for the Highland Farm Plat Number One and Plat Number Two, I call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand? Say again? It hasn't been read? But since it was for the actual period of time? Okay. Well, read it in, Mr. Mullen.
Resolution, preliminary plat, Highland Farms, Plat One, time extension, February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the Prattville Planning Commission approved the Highland Farm, Highland Farms Plat One preliminary plat on March second, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas preliminary plat approval is effective for a period of eighteen months, and whereas sixty-eight ventures, the developer has requested a time extension for the approval of said plat, whereas the proposed preliminary plat was approved for a time extension on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and whereas the developer has requested for an additional time extension. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its approval to extend the time completion for the approved preliminary plat of Highland Farms, Plat One, for a period of one-hundred-and-eighty days, ending on eight twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore be further resolved that any, in all contingencies of March second, two thousand twenty-three, preliminary plat approval will remain in effect. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, without further discussion, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand? All opposed, lack sign? All right, and item number, next, item number five.
Resolution, preliminary plat, Highland Farms, Plat Two, time extension, whereas the Prattville Planning Commission approved the Highland Farms, Plat Two, preliminary plat on March second, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas preliminary plat approval is effective for a period of eighteen months, and whereas sixty-eight ventures, the developer has requested a time extension for the approval of said plat, whereas the proposed preliminary plat was approved for a time extension on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and whereas the developer has requested for an additional time extension. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its approval to extend the time of completion for the approved preliminary plat of Highland Farms, Plat Two, for a period of one-hundred-and-eighty days, ending on eight twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore be further resolved that any and all contingencies of March second, two thousand twenty-three, preliminary plat approval remain in effect. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hear none, I call for the question. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand? All opposed, lack sign? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I've had a few people that asked me that they wanted to make a speech or something like that, is it, is there anything to be discussed at this moment that we know of? If not, hear none? Huh? Oh. I didn't see you.
I don't know how to turn this on. My name is Lynn Turner Kimbrel, and I'm the co-owner of seven thirty-three Durden Road. And y'all had a hearing on December the nineteenth in regards to Gaddis-Pitt Road and Durden Road property. I inherited this property with my brother, and all I wanted to do was split the two acres into two one-acre parcels. I never knew about the public hearing. I never knew until I watched on YouTube about the cul-de-sac, on exactly how it was worded. In the past two weeks, I have talked to the planning department two or three times. All they would say is, everything was okay on the original public hearing. Never said anything, the first day I was in there, 'cause I made a visit in, never said anything about a cul-de-sac. Second day, I went back down, oh, if you want to talk to the council, you gotta pay another two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, submit all the paperwork, and be back in here on March for the next thing. I go to Alabama Land Surveyors. I said, did you represent me or us at the December? Crickets. My biggest concern is, I believe it was the week of the snow, the city sent someone up to take pictures of Gaddis-Pitt. I'm not wanting a driveway, I'm trying to close out an estate, I'm trying to avoid multiple recordings to put from my father, who is deceased, into my name and into my brother's name. So, I happened to seize the truck up, I run up across the property, and he goes, I'm up here to take pictures. I said, let's get out. And he goes, but I can't match this number up. I'm not calling that name or that person, I'm just saying, I can't match this address up. I said, if anybody's cause, if anybody has a right to complain, it's the City of Prattville's garbage pickup. For five to ten years, that garbage truck has gone up Gaddis-Pitt, and then had to back up, and then turn back around, and go back out towards Durden Road. Pictures were made, the next week, that truck is backing up that road. So, thanks to Paxton, I was told by the planning department to reach out to him, and he would tell me what was needed. I said, I didn't, I didn't know about a cul-de-sac. He said, well, it's not what you think. My concern is, let me back up, Alabama Land Surveyors then, at the same time says, oh, we were notified that we could meet, that they want to meet with you. I said, well, nobody's told me. So, I'm sitting out here trying to figure everything out, I get nothing from anyone but Paxton. Thank you. Now, my biggest question is, why am I going to put the cul-de-sac in? When I don't have garbage on there, I understand you, I understand nine-one-one. But this has been going on for five to ten years, why were the original people not that their garbage is being picked up? Why were they not responsible for that? And then on the backside, when did Gaddis-Pitt Road change? When did it, 'cause when did it make from going to a turn to a straight into a private home? I grew up there, I know Gaddis-Pitt Road combined Durden Road all the way to Lower Kingston. Now it's totally closed, except it goes into a private, basically a private drive. Now, I have already spoken to Paxton, and yes, we're all gonna meet, but I, I just don't know, there is asphalt there, you are correct, 'cause I, I went and watched that YouTube, Mayor, you are correct, there is asphalt, it goes to the private drive. It is slag from Durden Road owned. No one will own up to keeping that road up for years. County goes snot ours, city goes snot ours. So, there's been two homeowners on that road that have been paying to keep that road up, when in fact, if it was annexed into the city limits, when Tommy Ray bought all that property, then city should have been obtaining that road. Right?
Well, if I can answer that question? Uh, no, ma'am, that is not correct. There's, there's several paved and unpaved drives or roads inside the corporate limits that are not maintained or owned by the, by the City of Prattville. This one, Gaddis-Pitt, 'cause that used to be my district, and, and, and it has been requested many times for the city to maintain it. But anyway, now we do have a, a mechanism where someone wants us to accept a, a private drive to be maintained by the city. We do have a mechanism now for it. Pax can actually help you get a copy of that. What I would say is that what I do know of Gaddis-Pitt, and again, I have, most of the time when we have something before us, I go out. This time on Gaddis-Pitt, I did not. Went off of memory.
Come on.
It's, and I do, I wish I had been notified about the garbage trucks going up here before, and the person you said from the city went out there, was he a pretty good-sized guy?
Yeah, he was a big guy.
Okay, could have been maybe Tracy Simpson? He's with...
He wouldn't tell me.
Okay, big smile, though?
It wasn't Tracy.
And Tracy? Okay, okay, I'm not for certain who that was, but...
Yeah, two guys in a truck. He was a big, big guy, and the, the smaller guy wouldn't get out of the truck. But, and I, I wouldn't been ugly, I'll be honest, I wouldn't been ugly.
At the next planning commission meeting after the one we voted on that one, I, I did make some comments for the record. For Gaddis-Pitt, we have not accepted that road, and we are not responsible for the, the paving of it. But the cul-de-sac that was put into, to, I guess, the contingents for that property was not only for public safety, but it is for, for sanitation as well, because if eventually someone might build up there, and they will need garbage, 'cause if you are in the city limits, you do have to have city garbage service.
Can I bring one more thing up? What if you're bringing your trash cans from out of the, it's gonna sound bad. Those garbage cans are being moved from, from the county into the city, just so the city can pick up? If I'm reading the plat right?
Well, I'll be glad to discuss that with you afterwards, but we actually do provide some services for garbage outside the corporate limits. Now, we do have ours identified.
But again, I'm not...
Normally by color, but by serial number.
Sorry, Mayor, I don't, I'm not, I'm not worried about that. I'm, I'm worried about your, your garbage guy. I mean, ten years he's been doing this, and then, again, and I'm not being smart, I, I just need to know what kind of cul-de-sac, why am I gonna be responsible? I just need to close an estate out.
My question is, once you close the state out, and you separate the property, the property with you and your brothers, are y'all planning to build?
I may come back to Prattville, if I do, that's where I wanna build, 'cause I grew up there.
But as of now, you're not gonna build anything?
No.
Okay, just separate property?
Separate the property, 'cause the will, the will states fifty-fifty.
Okay.
Everything is fifty-fifty. So, hey, I'm sitting here with a will, I've already closed, will's probated, now let's get it legal. I'm paying taxes on something that, that's not mine.
Okay.
Except in name only, because I am the executor of the estate, and I'm not gonna not pay the taxes. But I have, I think you had your hearing on December the nineteenth, on the twenty-third is when I found out from someone that lives up there about a cul-de-sac, so we don't know anything about it. Okay. I sold and closed the house on December the twenty-third, so I am living on the property. And I said, here I am, I'm inside, I'm back in Prattville, and I can get all this paperwork going. I, I can't get answers. Or I would have been here December the nineteenth, because I, I didn't know it was happening to explain, because again, I watched, and no one was here to explain what was going on, except for Paxton, and there's somebody by the name of Scott.
Any answers from our commissioning member? Mayor?
Not necessarily an answer, but a, a comment, and I do feel, feel for you there, but you know, as executive, you can use some of the estate monies to, to meet these regulations, I believe, but you need to check with a lawyer on that one. But I still stand by the fact that we do need a cul-de-sac on there, whether someone is building on it or not. Now, we did have a little difference of, on this previous...
Now, we did have a little difference of, on this previous subdivision we're talking about, where it has five lots, you know, they're just building the subdivision in front. But as they start, as they build the next, on those next ABC lots? They do have to pull the cul-de-sac in there. And a lot of that is because of our public safety and our public works. So I still stand behind that. And I think the city actually did a favor by allowing you to, to subdivide without it being facing a city, city street.
I don't have the subdivision, I don't, because that my...
You do as soon as you meet the regulation.
But we're just, but here's my other thing. This is...
Excuse me, give your name.
I'm Harper Turner. I'm the owner of 733 Durden Road. I live in the house there.
Okay.
So if nothing happens with her building a house there, we're more than willing to pitch in with a cul-de-sac. That's not the point. The point is, the, that's, these people, these residents have been there now for 10 years, and nothing's never been said about a cul-de-sac until we ask for a survey of this land, which she was told by the city, the county or the city, you have to get this land surveyed and split before you can close this inheritance of my father's thing out. So that's what we've done. We followed, we followed the steps that we have been told by the city and all what to do, and then we get told by Alabama Survey, you're not getting a survey. The city has shut us down till you put this cul-de-sac in. Our father has been dead for three years. We've been trying to close this estate out for three years. We cannot get it done, because the city has shut everybody down till we put a cul-de-sac. We don't need a cul-de-sac. Y'all need the cul-de-sac, not us at this point. If we build on there, we will be more than glad to pitch in. But we're, at this point, we're not building. She's living with us, me and my wife. I mean, that, that's the whole point, just so we can close the estate out, then if we decide to build her a house there, which will be a 1,600 square foot house, we will pitch in on the cul-de-sac. The residents that live there now need to be paying for the cul-de-sac, not us at this point. Does that make sense?
You and I have known each other for a long, long time, and...
I was going to try to stay out of this.
And I'm sorry y'all going through this, but you know, this is the only way for the city, is to put something in place for our public service, you know?
Sure. We're all, we're all for that. We're all for that. The fire and, and ambulance service and, and city sanitation department, we're all for that. We're not, we're not disputing none of that.
I don't know what the fire, I don't know what you would do now.
He, the, the, one of the houses is in the county, so you going to cover it? I mean, it's out of city limits. Do you cover it?
We, we have.
Okay. Well, wait, that's, this time, we're not...
I can't really answer that.
We're not arguing any of this. All we're saying is, we did what we was told to do, to close the estate out, and then it's turned into a turmoil, you know? You can't close nothing, you're not going to do nothing till you put this cul-de-sac in. Why are we responsible for the cul-de-sac?
Mike, one more. Are there any engineering drawings of the cul-de-sac?
I can put slag down.
Mr. Hayden?
I have a question. Right now, you have a lot with a house on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been there for 40 years.
And y'all are trying to sell that lot and that house?
No.
You're trying to split the lot?
It's two acres, it is a measly little two, almost two acres.
So the, the problem is, it's not the size. Once you cut a lot into more pieces, that's technically a subdivision.
We're not, we're not planning on cutting it at this point. That's come from...
No, if you split the lot legally, it's becomes a, by definition, you have subdivided that lot.
Okay.
Whether it's a five-acre lot cut in half, 100 acres?
Yeah.
Or, or just one acre. Once you cut it in half, you've made a subdivision. Now, the road that all of that's on could have been grandfathered in, if it's been here for 20 years, 10 years, doesn't matter how long it's been here.
Been here for a long, 1948.
When Durden Road was built, we didn't require curb and gutter. We do now. We don't make the people that own the lot put in curb and gutter. They're, they're just, it's grandfathered in. But if anybody on Durden Road says, you know what, my two-acre lot, I'm going to cut it in half, we can require them to put in curb and gutter. We can require them to put in sidewalks, even though they don't go anywhere, because the new regulations you have to meet. It's just like if you, if you built a house 50 years ago on the beach, they didn't care about hurricanes back then.
Yeah.
You know, you just built a house. Now there's requirements that you have to meet for safety against hurricanes. So if you have a 60-year-old house in Destin and you go to do work on it, you'll have to do it per the new code.
I understand.
The new code is to have a cul-de-sac. So you have to have a turnaround point on the road. So unfortunately, what's happened is you have been grandfathered into a scenario where there's no cul-de-sac. If your neighbor was, beat you to the punch and cutting their lot in half, they'd be the one stuck with the cul-de-sac, if that makes sense. So just by virtue of you dividing the lot, that's what's put you in this position.
So if I do not, we, we split the land, the two acres? And she decides to build there, and she comes in, the existing driveway that we have, we still responsible for this cul-de-sac?
When you split the lot, that's when you're responsible. You've, you've subdivided at that point. Even if all you were going to do was cut the grass over there and just call it someone else's land, you, you could write into the, the deed, no structure can be built on this. It's still, you have subdivided that lot.
Okay.
And that, that's what puts you into this predicament.
And we, the engineering department, will be more than happy to meet y'all up there and discuss what investigations are, decides and all that. I apologize if, if your surveyor didn't communicate that with him. We've been communicating with your surveyor. We, we don't have any control of that, but if, if y'all want to reach out to my office, we'll be more than happy to schedule a time to, to meet up there and discuss those requirements.
I, I concur with what Seth just told you, and I'm sure, I'm assuming that attorney's telling y'all to do this to be able to get the two lots split up per...
No, we, no, we...
There's not an attorney?
It's no attorney in Bog.
Y'all, who's, who's giving you the, who's giving you the advice to split the lots as far as how to...
That's us. We inherited this, this, this lot.
Y'all are trying to split it on...
And we was, she had a house on the lake, and we was going to sell this house on Durden Road, and I lived over here in town, and we, we was up there every weekend working, fixing the house, doing stuff. And I told her, I said, this is stupid. This is stupid to sell this place. We were born and raised here, you know? I'll take the house. I'll sell my house in town. I'll, I'll take this house. You take the, that lot right there, the little spot of land on the hill, if you want to build your house, you build your house, whatever, whatever you want to do, that's yours. You do what you want to do. So the next step was to get it surveyed and get it split equally as we could. You know, we ain't thinking nothing about no, we ain't building no subdivision. We building a little mother-in-law's house up on the hill, you know? Come on.
The unfortunate part, the unfortunate part is just by definition, once you split into...
Have you ever been to Durden Road?
Yes, I grew up, my dad had a, a house, I don't even know if it's still there. There used to be a store.
Who eats grocery?
I'm, I'm fixing to tell some people. When I was six years old, I would cross Durden Road and I'd buy two beers and a pack of cigarettes from my dad and bring them back home. Yeah.
That's not part of the record.
I will tell you why it was being split.
Yeah.
Because when I called to say, what is the city, or I know different, county, who cares?
Yeah.
Basically, you can't have two dwellings.
Right, no, you can't. You can't have two dwellings on...
And so that's why I said, okay, then I will split.
Yeah.
See what, let me close the...
I, I'm not a lawyer, and this isn't legal advice. You could sell your half of the land to him. In other words, you could, you could value it in, in the probate, you could say, this land, this five acres is worth, let's say, a dollar, okay? And so my half would be 50 cents. So you keep the land and give me 50 cents, and we'll consider the land split in half, without splitting it in half.
Yeah.
Could she build on it, you think she?
No, 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 no. Again, so to, to split the land, unfortunately, and this, you're not the only ones that get caught up in this, there's a lot of people on, they'll have a road, you know, somewhere in Prattville, and they'll be like, hey, we just want to, my brother wants to build a house next to me, and it's technically a subdivision at that point. You know, we're not making money on it, but we are subdividing that into two pieces or more. And unfortunately, the way the regulations are, even though it's one to two, it's still a subdivision. You know, we're not competing with Aaronoff, we're not competing with D.R. Horton there, but we are a, creating a subdivision.
All right.
Well, no, just by the definition. Yeah. According to the city regulations, so what do we need to do?
Well, what you do, you can talk to them probably after the meeting, and the engineering department. But as of now, I need to close the planning commission, and then we can move forward thereafter.
All right, thank you.
Not hearing anything else? Planning commission now is closed. Thank y'all.